We're recording.
Okay, okay, welcome to the meeting of October 6th. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel 12. It can also be viewed via live stream at WHCA.tv. It will subsequently be broadcast on youtube.com. Start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic. In which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Dan, if you can get your squeaky cat out of there, it'd be great. We'll open the meeting with a we'll open the meeting with a moment of silence and as we do, let's keep in mind all of those people that have been affected by the COVID virus. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. Like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants?
No move, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Accept a motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
No move, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Okay. Any discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Approval of the minutes, open session, September 15th, 2020. Is there a motion?
No move, Dan?
Second.
Second. There any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes in the open session of September 22nd, 2020.
I'll motion.
Is there a motion, please?
Motion, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Any discussion? Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
An elbow, yes, also. The first thing on the agenda?
Paul, did you miss approving bill and payroll warrants? Did we do that one?
No, we did that. We did that, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Can anyone corroborate that? I think we did.
We did.
Okay.
Okay. My error.
Okay, the first, the first item on the agenda is a public meeting with the respect of the application of Whitman Estate Furniture, James Makato, for a junk dealer's license on the premises located at 356 South Avenue, Unit C, subject to final inspection approval and approval of the building commissioner and a fire chief. Is there a motion?
I'll make it Dan's elbow, too.
Second, Brian.
There is second. Now, I know James was here earlier. Does anyone have any, any questions of James?
Yeah, Sandy's been there, right? Yeah.
He's here.
And James, would you like to say, anything you'd like to say about your new business?
Um, I, I, I just want to apologize. I can't be there to see you people. I don't have Zoom and I don't have a cam either, but um,
Okay.
I had, I had a license in Whitman probably about seven years ago, but I turned it in because, but I'm going to give it a shot again if you guys will let me.
Okay, well, I think we'll find out pretty soon. See no discussion, no further discussion or no questions. We'll go to, we'll go to a vote. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. James, good luck. Good luck this time.
Okay, thank you.
Hey.
Have a good evening. Bye bye.
Good evening. Town administrators' report, update on COVID-19, Frank?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. The, as you know, the governor's issued new guidelines for COVID activities or permissive activities under COVID. And the only, the only concern I have is as we start opening up, we're seeing the numbers climb pretty much every day. Today was low at 340 something. But I'm just hoping that people hold it together and do what they need to, to make sure that we keep it under control because to be ashamed to move backwards. I did meet with the Health Department and Al from the DPW. Our meeting was good. Al acknowledged, and I said DPW, I meant VFW. Al acknowledged that the guts are going to be called by the Board of Health and he will comply with their requirements. The meat raffle and poker runs have been dispensed with. They will not be operating. Couple of other quick things, and this is under the town administrator's report. The planning board was ultimately successful in hiring a recording secretary and we, I, me, have persuaded her to also assume that responsibility for the Capitol Committee. So that would be the first time in many years that we've actually had a recording secretary. Because it's going to both departments, I would just like a confirmatory vote by the board to, for that appointment of recording secretary, both for planning board and Capitol.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, Brian.
And their information.
Yeah, right. And this is to, this is to appoint Melissa Maroney.
Correct.
Are there any questions of Frank? Okay, we'll move to the vote then. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And then I'll vote yes, too.
I do have a.
Go ahead, Frank.
Okay.
Brian? Brian, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, I had a question for Frank if, in the COVID line there. Are we going to take any position on Halloween or is that going to be left to the Board of Health?
It ultimately, the Board of Health should be putting out guidelines. The EPA has been emphatic and recommending that there be no door-to-door trick-or-treating. And we, while we can't technically restrict that activity, we can certainly issue an advisory that we don't think it's in the best interest of the town to conduct that activity.
Thank you.
Do you have a? Is that, is that all you needed, Brian, or did you have something to say about it?
No, I just, you know, it's want to give people time to plan if there was, you know, if we were going to have a statement, yeah or nay about it.
Okay.
And of course, the Board of Health will be putting out an advisory on that as well.
Okay. Okay, continue with your report, Brian.
Facilities management. I did provide a letter that was submitted by Todd Decudo, who serves as our custodian and maintenance, our sole maintenance person for the town. Todd has expressed an interest in expanding his role and responsibilities now and in the future. He is really essential to getting a lot of the things done that happen to maintain our facilities, not only the town hall, but the police station, the library, the DPW, which has been added to the electronic world. And I would suggest that the board consider designating him assistant facilities manager with an eye toward coming up with a, a classification that we can make to provide him with some level of compensation for those additional services he provides. Right now, he's actually doing them in part of the overtime line as well as during the workday, but it's something that I think has grown to the point where we should probably have some designation. I'm not suggesting that.
Does anyone have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I do, if I may. Yeah, I think we need to get somebody in line and working with, I think, Bob Caron, because Bob Caron, I mean, I don't know when he, if, when and if he's ready to retire, but I mean, that time is going to come. And we should have somebody for backup who knows the facilities and can carry on if in fact Bob does decide to retire someday.
And I.
I'd rather be prepared. I'd rather be prepared and make sure our buildings are, are secured and maintained.
And I do want to remind the board that Bob holds that role in addition and separate from his role as building commissioner.
Justin, did you, do you have your hand up, Justin?
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if this information's been presented to the Finance Committee yet, if we consider adding a line to the budget to designate an assistant?
I think that would be part of the budget building for this year.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, anything else in your report, Frank?
Yes, I met today with the town administrator in East Bridgewater and one of their selectmen to discuss veteran services. As you know, we are separating from Abington under the Veterans District that we created five years ago. And the East Bridgewater TA was interested in looking at a district that would comprise Whitman and East Bridgewater and then perhaps West Bridgewater, which contributes a small number of services to the total group. We're in the very preliminary stages, but I think it would benefit both towns, as it has with Abington, to have a district and to have multiple options for providing veteran services in making it affordable, yet full service. So I, the East Bridgewater Administrator is reviewing the agreement that we had with Abington. He's going to get some comments from his board and from his council. And then I would like to see the Board of Selectmen for Whitman do the same and consider whether we want to have a program that balances the needs of the communities. The strategic line with East Bridgewater is we're comparable communities. We have approximately the same population and similar budget structures. So it would seem to me that it could be beneficial to us. But again, at this point, it was a preliminary meeting.
Thank you, Frank. Does anyone have any, any comments?
I have a comment on that, Cal, if I may. Frank, I totally agree with regionalization of any, anything that we can do. But can one person handle that responsibility?
No, and it wasn't one person in Abington either.
Okay, all right. It'll be like.
It would be, it would be two VSOs, depending on whether West Bridgewater comes into the picture, whether the second one will be part-time or full-time.
Okay.
But the cost will be a portion based on our veterans' population, which is the way we did it with Abington.
So we'll have more than one person doing it so that one person isn't overwhelmed with the possibility of three towns?
Right. And it also gives veterans the opportunity, we have Whitman veterans who go to East Bridgewater, a couple of them. We have veterans from other towns that come to Whitman. The only time it has a budget consequence is when that veteran is seeking Chapter 115 benefits, which is financial support. And that request has to go through the town of residents. So.
Right, yeah. And the reimbursement from the federal government, that still goes per town, right?
No, it's, it's reimbursed by the state.
Solid state.
And it's 75% of what we pay out in benefits. And it goes to the town that is paying the benefits.
Okay.
The other thing that, that the really big difference today versus years ago is the VA has recognized the advantage of having veterans agents in each town. And they've actually shifted the burden of handling VA benefits to the state veterans agents to assist the VA, the veteran in completing and applying for veterans' benefits and social security. It's kind of ironic because we're doing more, but we're not getting paid for it. But again, they're there to benefit the veterans.
Anyone else?
Just circling back real quick on the, where is it? The facilities management item. Just, we did not take a vote on that. We, that's, we're just under review, right?
At this point, yes.
Exactly.
All right. Right. I didn't, I didn't want to bring it and ask the board to vote at the same time. It's something to review and consider. We need to come up with some numbers, make some recommendations. And then, then I would guess it would be a request to the board to consider support.
I agree, and I'm definitely not speaking against it right now. But probably should be part, I know the last town meeting, the town voted on and put some money aside to develop a strategic plan. And I think probably it should be part of that when that gets going.
Yeah, I agree, Randy. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Frank?
Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Next item on the generous budget review, anything, anything to be said about that at this time?
The 711? Is that what we're talking about?
No, we have a, we have an item called budget review. I imagine there's nothing, nothing to discuss there, right?
We don't have anything yet, but people are now submitting budgets to the town accountant, who is preparing a budget worksheet and interacting with the various departments. When they're collected, the town administrator will have to work with those budgets and meet with the Finance Committee and present an outline.
Okay, and you use Randy's term, circling back on the, on the strategic plan. The money that we've, we've been allotted to hire a consultant, is there been any progress on a job description for that consultant?
I would say no at this point. What we have to do, I guess, is prepare an outline and seek quotes for it. It would be a consulting role. And I will work on that over the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you. New business, discuss the 711 at 6:43 Washington Street, receiving a Keno license on the Mass State Lottery Commission.
Okay, this is an area where we don't vote. This is an area where we don't vote unless someone on the board is opposed to issuing the license. I'm not.
Any, any opposition? Okay, seeing none, then good luck to the 711. Old business, act on a revised travel policy?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, you missed a somewhat important item.
What did I miss?
Act on the request of the town clerk, Don Volley, to sign the warrant for the November 30 election.
Yeah, what did he say? The, the agenda that I have has old business and the first item, act on revised travel policy.
No, the newer one, if I may, says act, act on the request of Don, Town Clerk Don Volley to sign the warrant for the November 3rd, 2020 state and presidential.
Wow. That must be, I don't have, I don't have that newer one.
That's why I'm here.
I have Don Volley? What?
That's why I'm here. I help you.
Let me.
Okay, Justin, Justin, was, was that the first thing on the agenda, Justin, under old business?
It was the last thing under new business.
Town clerk? Oh, under new business. Oh, I had, I had the act on the request under old business. I'm sorry. Oh. Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, my mistake. I have two different agendas here, one with it under old business and one with under the new business. And I thought that the one with it under old business was the, was the newest one, but what the heck. Let's act on the request of Town Clerk Don Volley then, sign the warrant for the November 3rd, 2020 state and presidential election and keep our fingers crossed. Is there a motion?
Uh, some move.
Second.
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 Does anyone have any, anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
We're voting now. Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan? And I'll vote yes, too. Okay, now we can go to old business. I don't know which one to use here. The act, can we act on the revised travel policy now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Does someone have a, to discussion, for discussion, does someone have a motion to pass it?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Brian.
There is second?
Right.
Okay, discussion. Anyone have anything to say about the revised travel policy? Randy?
I, I think it just needs to be corrected because on several pages, it says approved August 11, 2020. So that's going to need to be updated.
Okay, just to make it tonight, tonight, right? It says, yeah, it says the policy is effective August 17th, or it wouldn't be effective until tonight.
Right.
Okay, so everybody agree to that change?
Yeah.
Yep.
It'll be tonight, it'll be today's, today's, today's date. Anything else?
No.
It will reflect the revision date into the.
And the source of funding is expense lines, correct?
Correct.
Please encourage to avoid traveling here, cleared by low risk. Okay.
Hello, can people hear me? I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I just lost, lost a connection and I think I'm back now.
Now you're back.
All right. So we're going to vote on the revised travel policy unless there's any further suggestions. All right, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, too. The next item I have on the agenda is to discuss the salary plan for the Council on Aging. Frank?
And I submitted an outline showing the recommendations for the clerical position following the adopted salary plan for town hall clerical. As you'll note, with minimal differences, all of the departments are following that matrix in setting salaries for administrative personnel.
Okay, would, would someone like to make a motion that we approve?
I'll make that motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
No second, Brian.
Okay, discussion?
Okay, if I may, Cal. Frank, at this point, the, the senior center is open, how many hours?
One more hour than the town hall.
I mean, I know they close early on Fridays. Do you think that maybe that building needs to be rescheduled according to the needs of the seniors? I'm just, you know, I'm, I've seen like the Abington Senior Center that is so busy, it's unbelievable. And it's, and they're there a lot. And this functions day and night. And I'm wondering if, you know, our seniors wish that we had the same thing.
Dan, there's a reason for that. The facility is about six times the size.
Oh, I know, I understand.
The valor, and, and they rent it out quite a bit.
Yeah.
For functions. The, the program that we've had for Whitman is somewhat limited by space. Right now, we are serving people by appointment for a number of things. The hairdresser is now backed by appointment only. The podiatrist, I believe, is, is back. But we're not serving meals in the building.
Right, I understand that. Not now, but.
I, I would guess that the COA would have to come back to the town with recommendations if they want to make changes. I don't know what changes you're suggesting.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if in fact, like, when, when this, when we can open the senior center, it may, right, and people can go there. It may be a place where, you know, I mean, I remember they used to have like, a lot of the women sitting around knitting hats for children and scarves and things like that. I don't, that, I don't know if that's happening anymore. I, well, not now.
It's not.
Situation because we're closed. But I mean, when we're open, they used to have lunches. They used to have a lot of things, you know, a few of the things that are there that I didn't see anymore when I would go by there. You know, and, and I'm hoping that with some new life in there, that things will change. And I'm wondering if the senior center should be open longer, you know, something to look at when our situation is over and we can get the town, we can get the buildings open. But you know, I just think that we need to serve the seniors just a little bit better. If they have needs, we should be helping them out.
Thank you, Dan. I'm just trying to figure out what this discussion has to do with okaying the, the salary plan for clerical services in the, in the center.
Well, if you're going to increase the salary, you're going to increase the hours, that's all. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Justin?
Just to Dan's point, I believe it's an hourly rate that we're, we're voting.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Be. But has the, this is in part been put forward because an employee is retiring. Has the new position been posted?
It will be once a decision's made tonight.
Okay.
We didn't know what the.
All right.
Good. Anyone else? Yes, Brian?
I was just curious, did we or the directors change the hours where we were open on Tuesday nights down there and cut it short on Fridays, considering they don't do the passports anymore?
Well, the passports were done on Tuesday nights.
Yeah.
It was the only reason to be there Tuesday night.
Yeah, and they're not doing them anymore. Yeah, and they're not doing them anymore.
No, that's correct.
So are they still gonna be open longer Fridays?
So.
Friday is half day.
Yeah. Because if, you know, Dan wants to serve the, you know, the senior community, you know, being open more hours on a Friday, where most seniors are not gonna be using the facilities on a Tuesday night, and if you're not doing the passports, it doesn't seem logical.
And frankly, the biggest challenge for us is going to continue to be our facility. The, many of our seniors go to Abington because they have more to offer.
Right.
And they have a number of things, they have adult daycare. They have programs that require space. Our senior center has typically been an opportunity for social gathering, light meals, you know, morning coffee and afternoon lunches. And Dan's right, there was a knitting crew that used to come in and knit all the time. And what will come when we see the end of this COVID thing is going to depend greatly on what the community interest is and how well the director can address those needs.
Frank, what's, what's per hour salary you suggesting, the 2216?
The, yeah, level three step one would be what a new employee would come in at. Unless, okay, an employee was already employed by the town in another capacity.
Right.
Plus, the steps are geared to length of service.
Steps are the steps.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the vote, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll, and I'll vote yes. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the process for working with community paradigm associates. Frank, you wanna?
The suggestion on that, the reason that's on the agenda is the board has to decide how you're going to communicate with community paradigm during the process. I know that they've reached out to a number of selectmen, I don't know if they've reached all of you, but their intent was to meet either directly or on Zoom or telephone with each of the selectmen and get a sense of what you're looking for going forward to put together a plan and proposal for a new town administrator. There should be someone on the board that serves point to be available to consult with them and speak when, when necessary. And I would suggest that a board member be designated for that purpose. Typically, the communication person is the chair, but whatever the board chooses or or whether you feel that's necessary is up to the board. It's more continuity and time management.
Right. I received, I had my conversation with Sharon Flaherty yesterday, as well as another one with Bernie Lynch later on in the afternoon. Have the rest of you guys spoken to anybody individually yet?
Yes, I have.
All of you, Randy?
Yes.
Okay. And talking with Bernie, he has suggested that the chair be the point person that that is the conduit for communication between the two. And I told him I'd be glad to do that, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Works for me. Do we need a motion, Frank, on that?
I think you probably should.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we. Person?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Thank you. And we already, okay. Act on the fee agreement for special counsel for environmental site work, this is an item that appeared on our last agenda. And at Randy's request, we tabled it until this meeting so that we could become more, the rest of us could become a little bit more conversant with what's involved. I received a phone call from Dave Cordero the other day. And he was, he and Lisa have, they haven't exchanged emails about it, but David has sent us all an email, and Lisa has responded to him. And I invited, as a consequence, I invited Dave as a, not as, not as a citizen at large, because we don't do that, but as a member of the finance committee and the building committee to sit in on the discussion this evening, and also sitting in on the discussion is, I believe, Tracy Costa. Tracy, who is an LSP that has worked with the town before. So Frank, you want to take, take over the beginning of this discussion and then probably turn it over to Lisa, I would imagine?
Sure, the issue at hand is whether the town should be looking at and assessing the conditions for the property at 602 Bedford Street, which we know to be contaminated, and we know has a substantial file at the DEP. The the town sought a grant from M O B D to fund a, I believe it's a phase two assessment of the property to try and identify and ascertain the level of contamination, what the contaminants are, and what would be involved in moving to the next step, which is making an estimate on what it's going to take to return that property to usefulness. Ransom Consulting, Rec, Tracy Costa is present as a licensed site professional for ransom would be the person assisting from the environmental side. And the intent of seeking counsel was to get an order from the court to allow the town to conduct assessments on the property, not to do anything further with it, but to understand what's there and what it would take moving forward to clean the property, whether it would be something that M O B D could encourage investors interested in occupying the property to make an investment in it. And the cost to clean up would be identified and, and it would help us to put the property back on the tax rolls. I do want to make it clear that the town, unless the board decides otherwise, has no intention of taking ownership of the property. The tax title action, which was advertised a few weeks ago, is a lean mechanism that has to be employed by the town in order to ensure its right to collect the taxes that are unpaid on the property. And Lisa prepared a proposal for the folks at Myers and Harrington to represent us in that request to the courts to seek an order allowing us to have access to the property to conduct those assessments. Lisa, I don't know what you have to add to it, but.
Just that the fee agreement is also for the regal property as well, not just for the former decor novelties. We, the court order that we obtained back 2015 for access to the regal property was only for 180 days. So we do need to motion the court to allow us access to regal as well so that Tracy and Ransom can conduct the phase three site assessment on the regal property.
Thank you, Lisa. What's actually, what's under, under discussion now is to act on the fee agreement, is there a motion to, is there a motion to act on the fee agreement and then we can discuss it?
I'll make a motion, Dan, so will you.
Second that.
Brian? Okay, and we have that in front of us. Discussion.
Lisa brought Tracy in, so it's my understanding Lisa has hired Ransom, so let's hear from Ransom.
Well, we're not in a contract now, but I'm, so, so again, this, the timing is really something to consider because we really don't know if same time next year, if mass development, what their funding mechanism will look like, certainly with COVID-19. There also, there's also another opportunity to apply for an EPA Brownfields Community Wide Assessment Fund. So we work with a lot of municipalities. I work with a lot of municipalities in southeastern Mass, I live in Norton, and really, the real essence of the Brownfields Act in 1988 was to really try to get some of these sites back on the tax rolls. As you know, these brownfield sites, they lie fallow, and really, the state wanted to provide an incentive to municipalities to try to move these sites forward. And there's what's called a chapter 21 E exemption, it's really liability relief for even, for a tax taking. So in other words, anything you do on the site under the Massachusetts contingency plan is really voluntary, with the caveat that you address any conditions of imminent hazard. You don't cause any more contamination and you actively divest yourself of the site. But again, beyond that is, you really want to be able to attract developers to the site. And I can assure you, as Frank conveyed earlier, especially for the decor site, there are over 50 documents at Mass D P, and many prospective purchasers would be very, very intimidated by those documents. So really, once we perform the assessment, you have one report that not only summarizes the extent of contamination, but really describes what your cleanup options are. So really, again, it moves, it's an option, an opportunity to really move the site forward. And also, I should mention, again, the, there's another EPA grant that's due on October 28. It's very competitive, more competitive than the mass development grant. But again, it, it's really prudent to try to take advantage of the opportunity while you can.
Tracy, I have a question.
Yes.
You said that when we do our assessment and we find imminent hazards that we have an obligation to act on that, can you talk about what that means, what we have to do?
So, so if there's what's called a condition of imminent hazard, for example, if, well, the good thing is, at least, you know, for decor manufacturing, the site's not occupied. So for example, if it had been occupied and we determined there were potential vapor intrusion or concerns to indoor air of occupants, that could be an issue. Most likely, I mean, it's, it's most likely you won't find a condition of imminent hazard based on the assessment we propose to do. But, but that's just, that is built into the language, that if, if you do encounter a new two-hour reporting obligation and a condition of imminent hazard, the town is certainly obligated to mitigate that, not with just measures that are just more immediate, not, not a large cleanup or anything to that, to that. But I've never really, I haven't encountered that on any of the assessments I've done for municipalities, the Brownfields.
Thank you, Tracy, I saw David had his hand up, and Lisa. David?
Hi, thanks, Carl. Tracy, hi, my name is David Cordero, I have an environmental background. And just to start off, are you aware of the back and forth emails between myself and Lisa Green, the subject matter involved in that?
I, no, I'm not.
Okay, so i- in the subject matter, I brought up concerns, in the email, I brought up concerns that the town may be moving forward in a manner that flies in the face of all DEP and EPA guidance towards Brownfields investigations in future cleanups. What they're proposing is to do an investigation on a property in which they don't own. And my concern is that that is opening the town up for liabilities if they don't, if they don't put the mechanisms in place through the A G O and through DEP in order to protect themselves from any liability. Is it, is it, is it, is it your contention that the, our, our, the town's consultant can just go out there and drill and have zero liability for anything that happens out there?
So certainly, we do this work all the time, just in terms of any liability of hazards, that's something we would address under health and safety plans. I mean, certainly, this site has a couple of issues. One is an area of PCB contamination. We know there's been some, a bit of a removal action by DEP. And I would assume the long-term solution is most likely a soil cap. So really, for us, I mean, I think we want to try to, we're not trying to open up a can of worms, per se, it's really, since there hasn't been any recent assessment, we want to evaluate what, what do those, there's, they're chlorinated solvents, what, what do those look like? It has, they're chlorinated solvents, that extends off. And beyond that, another big data gap is, we really don't understand if there are any hazardous building materials and any impact, potential impacts to indoor air, to future occupants. And that's certainly something any prospective buyer would want to know. And yes, but, but in terms, I guess I don't understand what you're getting at in terms of the risk of performing an assessment. Other than that, potential condition of imminent hazard.
Sure, I mean, you'd have a substantial release migration issue, but you could, you could identify that as well. But in terms of liabilities, you're bringing up environmental hazards, you know, every, I think everybody's well aware that when you go onto a site that's known contaminants, there's a hazard there. But the only, the only environmental liability I'd be referring to is the potential for you to, for the drilling to potential poke through a confining layer and then allow shallow contaminants to go into the deeper aquifer. But, but that's not what I'm, that's not necessarily what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is what type of liability does a non-owner have when going on to somebody else's property? How does, how does the 2011 E provide protections for that?
Well, again, I mean, I've worked with at least a dozen municipalities really performing assessments and in some cases cleanups of Brownfields sites. So, I mean, I think there's a bigger risk by not doing anything. I'm not, you know, I'm not an environmental attorney. So, so, but with that said, I, again, I think there is, there's certainly an opportunity to determine what does the site look like now, and can we fill in these data gaps and really put these puzzle pieces together so you can get the site back on the tax rolls?
All right, let me frame, let me frame the question a different way. Would you, would you, would you go onto a property that you didn't have, that you didn't have access to from a property owner and use a geoprove or holostem logger or some type of activity to perform a subsurface investigation?
No, certainly, getting back to what Frank conveyed, you would need to obtain that access. And that would be under that.
Okay, so.
The administrative warrant.
What? What, right, so, but the administrative warrant, if you see, if, I'm assuming we're gonna, it's gonna be the same type of warrant that got access to the regal property. that got access to the Regal property. Now, the Regal property was a Department of Health warrant. They wanted inspection and they, they did drilling out there, but they did drilling on, on landscape services. So the, the investigation was not, you know, you would never know anyone did any work out there.
We, we performed that, we actually performed that investigation on behalf of the town. So similarly, we would not, so keep in mind, if, if for example, the, the area of PCB contamination has a clean soil cap and a geo textile layer, we would not perform any drilling in that area to penetrate the layer. But I wanted to also get back to what you said about that clay layer. We've performed a similar assessment for the Town of East Bridgewater that has a clay confining layer with a site, a brownfield sites with chlorinated solvents contamination. We are very, very sensitive to that and make sure that if we're performing assessment, we do not, we perform assessment outside of those, that, that, that confining layer. So, so we, before we perform the actual assessment, we really look at all of the, the past data. We comb through all of the reports. We also work with the municipality to discuss our, our assessment too. And that's certainly something we could do with the board, just so everyone feels comfortable.
You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not answering my question or you're not understanding what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, forget about contamination, just, just forget about contamination altogether. If a cli, if your client said, ransom, we want you to go out on this property and, and, and perform activities to the subsurface without the property's owner, would you do that?
No, of course not.
Okay. So, so that's the situation that we have here. And, and the DEP and EPA guidance says that you should speak with the A G O, you should speak with DEP and get teams together, meaning environmental attorneys and L S Ps who are, who are, who are knowledgeable in brownfields to get those, get those, get that information done upfront to get yourself situated in a position where if someone were to come back and say, and say they, that you damaged the property in any manner, that you would, you would, you would receive 100% liability. If, if you go to the Attorney General's website in Massachusetts, it's right there in plain language. So that's, that's the concern that I have, is that this town is moving forward in a manner that is, that flies in the face to every guidance document that DEP and EPA is putting forward. So, so my, again, I, I can't understand why a, an L S P would recommend moving forward in that manner. And you're telling me that you wouldn't?
So, so yes, but I, I think the question you're asking me is really a question for an environmental attorney, which I'm not. So again, really.
Tracy, maybe, maybe, maybe I can, I might want to recognize Lisa because she's been wanting to get into the, the conversation for a little while. But unless, unless I'm totally mistaken, isn't this the, what we're voting on is a fee agreement with, with a law firm that will take care of the issues that David is concerned about? Am I, am I misunderstanding that, Lisa?
No, you are correct, Mr. Chair.
You, you wanted to say something, Lisa. Was it, did I just say what you were gonna say or?
Yeah, well, that's exactly what the, what the Myers and Harrington fee agreement is to address. It is to motion the land court to allow the town access to the property to conduct the site assessments. There is a letter from our town council that addresses the ownership of the property. And Myers and Harrington also assisted us with the court order to access the Regal property. This is the same exact situation. So Tracy Costa and Ransom are not going on the property just on a whim to conduct, conduct site assessments. They will be allowed access by administrative order by the court, which will shield the town from liability, which falls under the brownfields because that property is designated a brownfield. So it does enjoy all of the protections and li, and liability exemptions of a brownfield property under the Brownfields Act and 21E.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add to this discussion?
Oh, I do. Carl, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Randy.
I have a tremendous amount to add to this discussion. I have been relatively busy over the last couple of days. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go right through Lisa's document. Unfortunately, you know, it was once said that, you know, the greatest enemy of knowledge is not ignorance, it's the illusion of knowledge. And I think that's what we have here going on, that there's some people that are trying to get something passed that clearly do not have an understanding of, of what they're doing. And I'm not speaking of ransom, but I'm speaking about liability issues on this town, the property. We've been given misinformation as a board and I'm now gonna take the opportunity to clear it up. So I'm gonna go right through Ms. Green's document. So first being brownfields, two purposes when dealing with the brownfield, reuse and redevelopment. You should have a plan. You should have a team set up to handle this as you start these projects. You do not just randomly go out and start poking holes on properties that you, you don't even own. Now, so we move on. I have read the, the, not only the toolbox from DEP, but I've read about just about every other brownfields document there is. Let me just go to the first page of this and I'm sorry that I lost my, my page, my train of thought. So when we're dealing with, with Ms. Green's document, she, her response to Mr. Codaro, brownfields grants do not cover legal fees. If you dig into this, brownfields are a specialized area of contaminated site cleanup, highly litigious, involve tremendous amount of legal work, court time, et cetera. Those will not be covered under any brownfields grants. So that's, that's a cost that this town better be prepared to absorb. The two key points again is for reuse and redevelopment. As the town administrator stated earlier, we have no plan of reuse and redevelopment. Ms. Green goes on to say that the decor novelties building as it stands now is a rehab and it will continue to, to decay and a developer would most likely prefer a rehab over a tear down. Well, we do not know the level of contaminants under that. If, as Ms. Costa said, if we're getting vapors from the PCBs in the building, the chlorinated solvents, it may not be a habitable building. That, that is strictly as an assumption to try and, and make this project more palatable. But again, it, it is a complete assumption. Also, we had been told about dating back as far as 2017, that there was a document where the heirs have, have given, given up responsibility of this property. Completely not true. Okay. As if you read into Attorney Sumner's letter, which was crafted on Friday, what we have is, yes, we do have a resident agent, Mr. George Marlett, an attorney for H and G Properties, otherwise known as Mr. Centoro. However, right now, he's not getting paid. He's working for a defunct company and basically is the resident agent de facto. We do know of heirs, and, and this is key, that yes, they have not taken title, but they have in no way ever renounced ownership. There is no documents where the heirs have ever renounced ownership, but they are not taking title due to the contaminations of 602 Bedford. We also know that 602 Bedford has a DEP priority lien for a couple hundred thousand dollars, a tort claim judgment for a hundred dollars, and a former tenant dispersment of over five million dollars. So before this town saw any money, that's where the money would go. In Ms. Green's document, she states there are only two 21E properties in the town of Whitman. Absolutely not true. There are actually seven open 21E properties in the town of Whitman. Easily some simple investigation, you can find that out. She, Ms. Green also recommends, sorry, discusses a woman, Catherine Cavalo. I happen, happened to have a discussion yesterday morning with Catherine Cavalo, southeastern regional manager overseeing Mass D E P southeastern region. She has worked extensively on the decor novelties property. And I quote, "Because you don't, you own the property, you will face unusual situations and challenges moving forward." So the statement that Ms. Green made in the September 29th meeting that every town's in the exact same circumstance, they're all polluters and, and none are owned by the town, is completely not factual. But luckily, Ms. Cavalo did say that she would happily bring her team herself, her brownfields expert in her legal resources. And when she discussed her legal resources, it would be to discuss the liabilities that possibly face this town when digging into this property. They will happily come out. They will do a full presentation and we will have experts actually guiding us through this process if that's what we plan to do. I don't see anyone except for Mr. Codaro who is, and Ms. Costa, who I, I think are qualified enough to do this. There are liability issues. We can't overlook them for the fact that this sounds good and unfortunately, I think that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Do you have a response, Lisa?
Um, yes, I do. Randy, I did also have numerous conversations with Kate Carvalho and she did not rec, she didn't mention any of those resources to me.
That was yesterday morning, Lisa.
I'm sorry?
That was yesterday morning. I have another call scheduled with her tomorrow. I, I said I would run this by the board and see if we can set up a time to get her team out here.
Right.
And that would be my motion. I'm just gonna make the motion right now that any fee agreement or work is tabled until the Mass D E P and their team can come out and give us a full explanation and presentation of what our liabilities are and how exactly this brownfields issue needs to be handled. That's my motion.
Well, I'm.
Just respond just a couple things. Randy, I did know in the email to Mr. Codaro that the grant did not finance legal fees. So I did note that. And yes, I apologize if I, I said that the decor novelties and Regal are the only two properties. I realize they are not the only two, but those are the two properties that are, right now that are under this discussion of the 21E. And my research is, is, I've done a lot of research on this. I, I didn't just go forward with this, this response without educating myself and conducting research on this, this project. And I, again, I have many documents that talk about brownfields.
Would you consider yourself a brownfields expert? Yes or no?
No, not a brownfields expert, no.
Then I think this motion to table any work, any legal fees. And let's set a date and have Mass D E P come out here and give us a full rundown and presentation of what, what needs to be done out there and exactly how it needs to be done. Okay. And they would be able to get out here as fast as our next meeting in the end of October or our first meeting in November.
Okay, Justin.
I just.
I'm not ignoring you, I'm not ignoring your, your motion, Randy. I'm just trying to get some, get some order into it. Because you're actually, you're making a motion to table and tabling motions usually aren't, aren't debatable. But I'd like to have this discussion go a little bit further before we get there. I understand that you're, I understand that your motion is also involving having someone else come on. Justin?
Just trying to get an idea of the, the timeline of all of this. So we, a couple of weeks ago, months ago, voted to allow Lisa to pursue this grant through the mass development. Now we are looking at a fee agreement for a special counsel to get access to the property, should we be awarded the grant. What, when do we, when will we know if we're gonna get the grant?
I don't really know what timeline is on grants. It's my understanding the award announcements may happen as early as January of 2029.
So I don't, I, I think that we can move forward with this fee agreement and possibly invite out people from the Mass D E P to learn more about it without.
You're doing it wrong, Justin. Plain and simple, she's doing it wrong. This is not the way this is supposed to be done. I mean, what?
I, I mean, Lisa, is it your intention to move forward?
She's, she's doing it wrong? Like this is not the way brownfields is supposed to be handled. It's not that hard to read all these documents. I, I mean, you know, the, the person, they're gonna get a brownfields expert out here. They'll do it by our next meeting. What's gonna happen is we're gonna authorize the fee agreement and we have to spend money to find, I mean, we went down this road in 2017. Ransom has already been out on the Regal property. Again, it's wasted money. Why? Because we're not doing it right. This is not the process, as Mr. Codaro said, that you were supposed to be following, going, doing these things. It's not just supposed to be you see a grant online and apply for it. There is actually a process. You're not following it.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Randy, like I mentioned, I have had numerous conversations with mass development, with Kate Carvalho, and she's never mentioned that we are doing this wrong. She actually encouraged us to go for the, to apply for the grant. She's never mentioned coming out here and having a discussion with us.
Did you ask her?
To come out and have a discussion?
Yeah.
No, we talked about, we talked about the site assessments. We talked about the states, their process in addressing the imminent hazards. We, we talked about by statute what they are allowed to do. She's never said, we will come out and speak with you.
Okay, well, I'm saying that right now, that she's expecting my call of what this board does tomorrow morning. And she'll be out by our next meeting with her team or our first meeting in November. So why are we pushing beyond that?
Mr. Chairman. You wanna chime in on this, Frank?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a couple of points that Randy's made pretty well. The, the point I would like to make is we did have advice in our initial assessment of the Regal property. We even brought the EPA in. They spent a million dollars or $950,000 cleaning up that property and then stopped because they ran out of money. The whole purpose of that was to make the property, the intent was to make the property accessible for development. You can't have a development plan unless you know what it's going to take to develop that property. And one of the things that comes into play is what it's gonna cost to clean it because the developer's gonna be responsible for that. And I, it's the first I've heard that DEP is willing to come out here and I think we ought to say, thank you and come on out.
Mr. Chairman, can I, on behalf, can I speak on, on the fee agreement? What, why, you know, my question is, why, why is the board not approaching this fee agreement? Just like you did the. Why is the board not approaching this fee agreement, just like you did the the town administrator search company? You you asked you asked multiple companies to provide cost estimates. You asked questions of the of the people of their qualifications. And then you and then you deliberated it. Here, you're not you're not doing any of that. And and like I said in my email, nowhere on this this law firm's website does it say they have expertise in brownfields. Brownfields is a is a subset of cleanup that is very specialized. Most, you know, more specialized than general environmental cleanup. You need and not only an LSP that's an expert in brownfields, but also an attorney that's expert in brownfields. I haven't heard yet today that you have those two pieces in place, which both the DEP and the EPA recommend that you do first.
Well, I want to respond to that, Dave. That's something you do when you begin the brownfields cleanup.
No, it's not.
Excuse me. Don't interrupt, David. I'm trying to talk.
Go ahead.
The assessment that we are talking about is not making significant changes to the property. It's not doing anything other than ascertaining the level of contamination and the potential costs for cleanup. Certainly, before we made a decision to invest town money in that process, we would do all of the things that are above. But the intent of this isn't for the town to do it. It's to identify the feasibility and costs of a cleanup for an investor to come in and assume all of those responsibilities and actions. Again, Randy says that DEP will come out and clarify all of that. And I I think it makes perfect sense to get them out here.
Well, before you vote on I would recommend that they have brownfields experience.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, this isn't about whether or not this is a good idea or not. I I don't think you would find anyone that would argue that cleaning up contaminated land is not a good idea. However, even when talking with Peter yesterday, he said you have to be leery too of DEP slightly because, you know, they're only out to clean up immediate hazard. But, you know, when I spoke to to Ms. Cavalo yesterday, it's a team effort. And, you know, it's it's getting her team out. Possibly, we can have Michelle and her team. And for me, this is making sure that there is no liability. Because from talking to Ms. Cavalo, the statement that we will not be under any liability is not factually correct. It simply is not factually correct that we can go out there and do whatever we want. And we may can just walk away. Not factually correct.
Randy, I didn't say that we could go out there and do whatever we want and just walk away. Again, I researched my facts very closely as a licensed attorney in Massachusetts. And I take pride in a lot of my work. And I have done a lot of research. I've read all of the documents on brownfields and the 21E statute. So please don't say that I'm not factually incorrect because my facts do all. I have a folder with all of the facts that I have stated based on everything I've pulled off the state and out of the.
When trying a case, what do you do? You bring in expert witnesses, right?
I'm not a litigator. I'm not a litigator.
If you're going to litigate, what would you do? You would bring in expert witnesses to prove your point. So all I'm asking is we bring in experts, somebody that has years of experience on this. I I mean, I if it's a matter of just, hey, we got to do it because, you know, we got to do it. God forbid she doesn't get it done tonight.
Well, Myers and Harrington helped us with Regal between 2010 and 2016. If we brought in a whole nother firm, they would have to redo all of that work or they would.
Work anyway, right? Because they haven't been out there since 2016. It's defunct. And that's the other problem. You not mentioning is that you can go out and do all this work right now. Just like that's been done on these sites in the past where they've had phase ones and they've had phase twos. But then it gets tied up and nobody takes it and it goes a year and a half or it goes, you know, 18 to 20 months. And then all of a sudden, that LSP isn't going to take the previous LSP's work and get back through this again. Where what it comes down to is we're never going to take this property. So we're talking to Ms. Cavalo. That's why there is a process that we're not following.
And again, she never mentioned that to me when I had numerous conversations with her about that property. Not once did she mention that they would they would do that. So I'm disappointed in her that she did not offer me that same course.
You know what the difference is, Lisa? I asked.
Hey, I I think I agree with Frank that it makes no and with Randy that it if the Cavalo is is ready to come out on on short notice, that's more information than we could have. As far as David's point about apparently shopping for law firms that have environmental experience. Myers and Myers and Harrington was a logical choice. I can see that as a logical choice. They've done work for us before and exactly what we wanted to have done this time. I I don't see that a need to to go beyond Myers and Harrington at this point. But I think it does make some sense to table the the discussion on their fee agreement. Because we have we have a couple of weeks before the next meeting. And if Randy's right that Ms. Cavalo will come out here with within a short period of time and help us out. I think it's a good idea to get that information too. But that's my thinking. So Randy's motion is to table and to add the information basically that we get from from Cavalo who's going to come out on short notice before we make the decision on the fees. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that motion?
I will second it for discussion, too.
All right. Discuss.
Okay.
Oh, no, time out. Tabling motions aren't discussable.
Okay, I was just wanting if Randy.
What we'll need, what we'll need. Actually, what we'll need is if we table this discussion, we can table it till the next meeting. And what we need is another motion Randy will probably make to invite the DEP people out on the timeframe that he he just guaranteed. Okay, so the the motion to table. We'll have a vote on the motion to table this discussion of the of the fee agreement. Randy? I'm asking for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian? Is that a yes, Brian, or a no? Okay, it's a no. Okay, and I and I'll vote yes. So I need a motion now to invite the Ms. Cavalo and her team out.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that per scheduled call tomorrow morning, I will be speaking with Ms. Cavalo. I'll be inviting inviting her team out to our next subsequent meeting. Or I also did say possibly would need to be the first November meeting, which we may have to set a date for. So I definitely said by the end of we made a tentative arrangement, assuming this all passed, that it would either be our very next meeting or the November meeting, depending on our team's availability. But it will be with herself, legal counsel, and their brownfields expert.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, Laurie, can you tell us what date the classification hearing is going to be?
That's November 17th, I believe.
So you perhaps would want to meet, well, November 30 is an election day.
November 10th. It could be, we'll meet on November 10th and November 17th.
Or I could even offer her to possibly extend some dates to us if we're still meeting Zoom. Maybe we could do it on and off Tuesday. More convenient time to get it in.
Or even during the day.
Well, yeah, Randy, why don't you see if you can get it here that for the our next meeting in October?
All right.
That's what that's what you led me to believe.
Yes.
And then if that doesn't work out, we'll we'll go. Yeah.
Okay.
For Randy to make contact on behalf of the board to invite Ms. Cavalo and her team to discuss these matters with 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 our board. Hopefully, at the the next meeting in October, if not either the first meeting in in November or at another time that's that's appropriate or that's convenient. Is it clear what that what the motion is? Any discussion of that motion? Okay, let's vote. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And and I'll vote yes. And and Tracy, I want to thank you for coming down and and helping us out tonight. Dave, thank you for joining us and and helping out with the discussion as well. But Tracy, I have to say that and I thought I was on I thought I was on CNN for a while because you have all those books behind you. Looks your setting looks great. And it was just like I've been watching on TV. Thank you. The next item on.
It's a pleasure. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
The next item on the agenda is the potential lease of land for the Monopole Tower. Frank?
Yes, we have a property on, we don't. There is a property on Franklin Street that houses a Monopole Communication Tower. The owners are having difficulty getting an agreement with the property owner to renew the lease. So they've approached us and asked us if we could consider leasing town property for a tower. The the property that would be ideal for the tower use would be the land behind the Commercial Street Pumping Station. It appears that there's certainly sufficient space to provide for a fall zone for the tower, which I believe is going to be 150 feet. However, that land also involves wetlands and a couple of other properties. So I'd like permission from the board to explore that and reach out to the Conservation Commission, find out if they're amenable to allowing a cross area for servicing the tower. And then whether we have sufficient space to do that. And if the answer to all of that is yes, the next step would be to do an RFP inviting bids for the lease of land for the purposes of a communication tower. That would result in the tower going up there and the tower at Franklin Street coming down. So before I put all this in motion, I wanted to talk to the board about it and see if we're okay looking at a space that is town-owned land that butts bare meadow that may have some wetlands. But but it's never going to be used for anything else.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Okay.
Right.
A discussion.
All right, Frank, does this go have to go before the planning board? I mean, do they have to have public the public?
Ultimately, it would ultimately go before the Board of Appeals.
Or whatever. And and so people can weigh in on it, you know, that are within sight of it?
Yes, typically, it's the butters that you would have. And that's an area where there are very few butters.
But my fear is why the Board of Appeals and not the planning board?
Because that's the zoning issue. It's not a planning issue. It's a zoning issue.
Right. And does the plant, does the zoning board ever turn anything down?
Yeah, they turned down the tower.
Yeah, well. I don't know. We'll we'll see.
Anybody else?
I mean, I just don't want to start anything on this if there's any concerns about putting a communication tower down on behind the.
And they can put in an access road? They can put in.
And that's why I need to talk to conservation as well. He was going to need permission to do that. And if they don't have that, there's no point in going any further.
Right. Didn't they just put a tower in behind Carrie's?
I don't know if it's constructed yet, but it was approved.
Right. So I mean, this is, are they going to interfere with each other?
No.
Thanks. Will they allow the town to possibly go on there for like maybe police or fire?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Well, I mean, if it's a tower and, you know, and we can, you know, put our own antenna attached to it.
Oh, okay. You you mean, can we put an attachment on it? I guess that's not the we'd address in the RFP.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Justin?
That was actually my question, if we could have space reserved in the tower.
Yeah, it would be part of the request for proposals. Yeah.
Okay, so what Frank is looking for is.
I don't need a vote, but I need.
You don't need a vote.
To move forward with it.
Everybody nod their head?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, go ahead. Frank, you got it. You got a week to work on it.
Okay.
The last item on the agenda is to consider the appointment of the of an interim town administrator while our our search committee is doing its work. Frank, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, as you know, I will be my last day is is October 13th. And my guess is the earliest you would have a candidate for appointment would be the end of November, beginning of December. So it would be appropriate to appoint a interim town administrator. And I I would recommend that the board appoint Lisa Green, who is serving as our assistant town administrator, as an interim during the period of the search. And
With the with the understanding that she'll be able to apply for the job as well. Correct.
Right. Yep, I think that was clear at the beginning of the process.
I'll make that I'll make that motion, Dan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brian? A discussion?
Yeah, I have something. If if Lisa's taking on both responsibilities, right? Is some of her work going to be pulled down to Laurie? As like, you know, taking over some of maybe the assistant town administrators, some of her job that she may be doing? Should we?
Can be, can. What can be, should. What can be, should. That's something.
Yeah. Right. And should should Laurie be compensated for that until we get everything in practice?
No, you're in.
You know what I'm saying?
I don't know. I frankly, I think Laurie is not adequately compensated for what she does as executive assistant to the board.
Right.
But do we have a mechanism to do that, I guess, would be my question.
Well, I I think we should find a mechanism. So that will be your job, Frank, is to find a mechanism to to be able to pay Laurie what she's what she should be getting paid if she's doing work outside of her 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 job description right now. I think that's probably happened in the past.
Yeah.
And I I think it's only right that we can find some way of compensating her for 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 duties that she doesn't normally do. Anyway, the what's the motion that's on the floor is to is to appoint Lisa as the interim town administrator. And I and I think Frank Frank, we ought to look at ways of well, look really closely at what how Laurie can help out with assistant town administrator things, but also to make sure that she's not doing it for nothing.
Well, I mean, there is a way to do that. If if Laurie is assuming some of the roles that are traditionally assigned to the assistant TA, the the interim TA will be paid out of the salary line for the town administrator. So there would be money available to compensate for those duties. I could have a discussion with Laurie tomorrow and then and then reach out to you as chair and see if that's something we can do.
Okay, excellent. Any any further discussion on the motion on the floor? I'll call for a vote then. Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
He's on mute.
Randy, you can speak.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to take this moment just to thank Frank for all he's done for the town of Whitman for so many years his activities on the Finance Committee and Board of Selectment and as town administrator for the whole time I've been on this board. I know I couldn't have done this job without him in that position, and I want to personally thank him for all he's done for the town of Whitman and me personally because I can't imagine Whitman without Frank as the town minister.
Well put, Brian. I-
New people bring new ideas.
I echo your sentiments. I'm really gonna miss having you here, Frank. And get that grin off your face. It's too wide for your last meeting, Frank. But Frank, I've told, when I was talking to the people from Paradigm the other day, I said that one thing about Frank that you have to know is that I've never seen him spend any time on the job when he wasn't working. And there are not a lot of people that you can say that about. But I've never seen Frank spend any time when he wasn't working to make Whitman a better place to live than it was the day before. He's totally, totally dedicated public servant and a model for, model for all of us. I take the, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
Is there a second? Okay, Randy?
I just had a quick, quick question. DPW, are we gonna be appointing that position?
I haven't heard from them, but I'll follow up tomorrow. We do have, I will tell you, we have one person who has indicated an interest in serving on the DPW board. He's currently a town employee on the Police Department.
Really?
Okay.
All right. And again, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Okay, we have made a motion to adjourn, and I'm gonna take a vote right now. Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And thank you very, thank you very much, and we'll see you in two weeks.
My last meeting, Frank. Okay.
I'll probably see you tomorrow, Frank.